Mr. Amos, are you on with us?
I am on.
Okay, great. Can't see you, but I know you're there. Tell us what distinguishes you from the other candidates in this race.
Good morning, everyone. Well, I'm Floyd Amos. I grew up in Jamaica, been in Lauderdale Lakes for 19 years. I know the city. I take the time out to go around the city and see what the residents need. Very active in the city, sat on the advisory board, the census committee. I am looking to create change. I know what the city needs. Right now, we don't have enough funding to build certain programs in the city. I am looking to see how we can be more innovative, how to create Lauderdale Lakes as a one-stop shop to bring more businesses in, to bring more vacationers in, so we can build the city and put the city out there more on the map.
What's the level of code enforcement in your city?
I would say on a scale of 1 to 10, I would say 7. I do see code enforcement out. They do hold the residents accountable in certain aspects, which I think is very good. It helps to keep the city on regulation and it helps to keep the residents in line with the compliance of the city. And it helps to keep the city pushing along as it relates to regulation and cleanliness.
Do you serve on any city boards at the moment?
Not at the moment. I was on the census committee board and I did the LGA training at the city.
Tell me what board you served on, please?
I served on the census committee.
Okay.
And I also did the LGA government classes.
Okay. Have you run for elective office before?
No, first time running.
Okay. What happened to what is happening this year? The new fiscal year begins October 1st. What's happening with the property tax rate in Lauderdale Lakes?
Well, I think the property tax rate will increase, but I'll tell you what I think. I think we don't have enough population to bring in federal funding, right? So I think we need to find a way where we can leverage the property taxes for the residents and see how we can decrease property taxes. The way to do that is go out there and see what funding is available that we can bring it into the city. And we need to also create marketing strategies where we can center around the businesses so we can leverage the tax for the residents.
I see. What are your proposed solutions to the lack of housing?
Well, I think first thing we need to do, we need to see where the residents are to see what the residents' concerns are, whether that's through meetings with the residents or doing surveys to see what's going on in the city. I think once we recognize what the needs are, we'll better be able to equip to go out there and make a difference when it comes to housing and see what fundings are there to help the residents around housing.
I think he's muted.
No, I'm here.
No, not you. Steve.
I'm sorry, that was me.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mr. Amos, you said that once we recognize what the needs are. It isn't already known what the needs are for affordable housing?
Well, I think we know some of what the needs are, but I think we can do more to go out there and talk to the residents and see what their concerns are. I think there's more we can do because I really think there's a bigger need out there that we need to tackle, but we first have to go out there and see what the residents need. Because the people is what make up the community. If we know what the people truly need, we are better able to go out there and tackle those needs to apply for better funding and federal grants, but we have to first know what the needs are. But we have to do that by going out there and let the people know who we are and that we are here for them and we're here to build the city of Lauderdale Lakes because the residents are the one that makes the difference. We are only here to serve the residents.
Sure, okay. This question may have been on our questionnaire, but I'm going to ask it here too well. Mr. Amos, what endorsement? Either a group or an individual, what endorsement are you most proud of?
As it relates to the city?
What endorsement in this campaign are you most proud of?
Well, I've been endorsed by my church, Ark Restoration Church. They have stood by me because they see my passion and they see my heart and my drive for people and for the community. They are supporting me 110% and they really believe that I can make a change in the great city of Lauderdale Lakes.
Okay.
Mr. Amos, when you say your church, you literally mean your church, right? You're the...
No, the church I attend, the church I attend.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up question there? Did you, when the PPP loans were out, did you get PPP loans?
Yes, I did.
Totalling a little over $40,000, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
That listed you as a religious organization, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so when you say it's a religious organization, that's not the church you're referring to now?
Yes, that is correct. I am a counselor and I am also a pastor. I am Pastor Floyd Amos. And so I counsel, I do ministerial weddings, I do funerals, I do anything that's religiously related. That is correct.
But when you say you have the endorsement of your church, you're not talking about... Go ahead.
I sit under a senior pastor, Pastor Alan B. Jackson.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
No problem.
I just have one more question about this issue, Pastor Amos.
Sure.
Many churches, to maintain their status under federal law, are prohibited from overt political activity. So I'm asked how legally, how your church can endorse your candidacy?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Churches to maintain their tax-exempt status must refrain from overt political activity. How is it consistent that the church can endorse your candidacy?
Well, the support is definitely there and they are endorsed by donating to my campaign and by telling me that they support what I am doing because of the change I'm trying to create for the city.
Yep. Tell me the name of the church again. I didn't hear it the first time.
Ark Restoration.
Tell us the name. Didn't hear it, sorry.
Ark Restoration Church.
Dan, can you help with the name of the church?
Yeah, I have it in his PPP work, so we've got the name of that.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Okay. As we move to the other two candidates in the race, Dan, I'm going to pass the question on to you.
Sorry, Steve, what was that?
I said, as we move to the other candidates in this race, I'm going to briefly turn the questioning baton over to you.
Oh, okay. Well, Commissioner Davis, let's swing over to you here. Could you highlight for us what you think are the kind of highs and lows of your last term in office? What stands out to you as something that was an accomplishment that you think voters ought to know about? And what's something that you think needs improvement going forward?
One of the things that stands out for me has been the fact that I started in 2018 the annual Lauderdale Lakes Career Fair. And one of my passions has always been in the city of Lauderdale Lakes is economic development. Before I was elected to office, I was on the Economic Development Advisory Board. And just as we assist businesses with economics, we also must assist our residents. So one of the big things that I am proud of is the fact that I have been continuing to have the career fairs in the city of Lauderdale Lakes for our residents. Have there been any lows? No, I think being a commissioner is very rewarding. You learn a lot more than you thought you knew before you got elected and you see differently how government runs. And so, but can I say that I've seen any lows personally? No, I haven't had any personal lows.
Okay, that's fair. Mr. Spence, when someone challenges an incumbent in office, it is sort of, one of the powers of incumbency, really, is that it's sort of up to the challenger to kind of make the case, why should somebody be thrown out of an office they've already been elected to? You know, this next go-around. So could you make that case, please? Why should the voters remove an incumbent from office? And why should they elect you instead?
Me and Vice Mayor had this conversation at our first election, 2018, that I felt that the residents always got the short end of the stick. And today, I still feel the same way. We have some major projects that were going on in our community and no matter how the residents try to voice their complaints or disposure of what's going on, their voices are not being heard. And it's only until something major happens when they do something. For example, I have a business here in the city. They were blocking the roads without notice. We filed complaints, we called the city, we called the 1-800 number. They didn't do anything. Then we find out at a commission meeting that there was an emergency call and there was a 30-minute delay because Oakland Park's fires fire came through the city and they can't get through. So this is the kind of thing that concerns me that when residents have a complaint or have issues, they never look at it. They see it as complaints, see it as just... You know, they just brush us off. They tell us, oh, we should be glad we're not Fort Lauderdale with the pipes busting, but they have to take in consideration of what's going on in the city and how it's impacting the lives of students, I mean, kids. Because even my school is right here in the corner. I seen the guys block the road in front of a school bus. So now a school bus has to reverse and reroute onto Oakland to 441 to come back around. Those kids missed breakfast for that day. And like I said, I called one of the commissioners and they told me, call the school board. But these are our kids, so for me, it's like there's a big disconnect between the commissioners when they get into office. And that's my major reason for running.
Commissioner Davis, do you want to respond to that? That it seems like commissioners are somewhat removed from the people that they're supposed to be representing?
I can only speak for myself. And one of the things that I always tell any resident, you have my phone number. Most of them, if you live in my neighborhood, you know where I live. I have an open-door policy. You can call me at any time. And I have had residents to call me with issues that they might be having. And I have responded to those issues. Mr. Spence is referring to, it appears to be, the UAZ project that has been going on in the city for a while, where we're replacing, or the county is replacing the sewer and water lines in our city. When the process starts, they tell you it is going to take at least two years. And during some of that time, there are things that happen that they might not know when they start digging that delays the project. And as I said, it is Broward County that hires the contractors. Broward County, it's not us personally, but yes, do we. In fact, I have even called our Public Works Director when there have been issues on my side when it was being done, along with calling the Office of the Liaison that Broward County has hired to be the liaison between Broward County and the city residents. As far as a disconnect from residents, we have town hall meetings. We let residents know when those town hall meetings are. We ask that our residents come to our workshops, our commission meetings, the town hall meetings, because that's where you can ask, especially the town hall meetings, that's where the residents can ask questions about whatever the particular topic has to be. So me personally, I do feel that we do get information out and listen to, or I listen to our residents. I can't speak for anyone else, only myself. So can people say that there's a lack of communication? We can always say that because maybe your particular issue didn't get corrected, so maybe you might feel that you were not listened to, you know? But that's not how I operate and that's how I never operate.
Okay, fair enough. I wanted to ask you also, Mr. Amos earlier brought up that he felt that there was enough code enforcement in the city, that they were doing a good job. You, when we asked you in your questionnaire to list three big issues in your city, one of them you put was code enforcement. And you said that you will continue to work with our Development Services Division to make sure we have sufficient code compliance officers. Do you think you need more code compliance officers? Do you agree with Mr. Amos that code enforcement is doing well right now? Could it be improved?
I can say code can be improved. We have had, you have to excuse the noise, my lawn, if you hear it, my lawn is being cut. So excuse the noise. As far as code, we have had issues in the sense of personnel. We will hire personnel. They will be with us for whatever period of time. And then if someone else offers them more money, then they're gone. So we have had issues with that. And even with that, when we are down on code officers, and the number of code officers, they still go out and do the best jobs they can. And the same thing, if I see something, I call the office and I complain about whatever it is that I see. Not saying that I should get any preferential treatment over a resident because we're all residents of the city of Lauderdale Lakes, but I think under the circumstances, our code has done a good job. And yes, everybody can say code can improve because everybody can see or say that I've seen this issue and I haven't seen it corrected. So there probably always going to be complaints about code, whether it's the people that have the issues in their home or the people that don't have issues but see other issues.
Okay. You mentioned part of the issue being turnover among code enforcement officers, that they get better pay somewhere else and off they go. Is that indicative of city government positions as a whole? Is there a high amount of turnover in Lauderdale Lakes?
No, there's not a high amount of turnover. We have had, our core employees have been there for a long time, okay? We do have part-time employees, but we also know that we are in a different time now because of COVID. People have changed how they are about jobs. And as things have changed, they are now getting higher pay in different positions, in different places. And yes, with Lauderdale Lakes being a smaller city, we might not be able to pay the same thing that, say, the city of Fort Lauderdale or some of the other larger cities might be able to pay.
How do you think BSO is doing in Lauderdale Lakes? What's your overall take on them? Do you think patrols in the city are enough? Do you think that more attention needs to be paid to Lauderdale Lakes from the Broward Sheriff's Office?
I think BSO is doing a good job, like anything else. When you see that maybe they're not doing something that you particularly feel that they should be doing, such as patrolling the neighborhoods, you then, yes, need to say, we don't see you. Where are you at? So as long as we can keep that kind of relationship to say that when we are having issues that residents are complaining about and they act on them, then I think we would be okay.
Hey, I wanted to ask the two other candidates about that as well. You know, in bigger cities like Pompano Beach, from time to time, the city leaders might get upset at how BSO is doing and start talking, because they may have the resources, if they really pull it together, to branch away from them and start a new police department or whatnot. In a city as small as Lauderdale Lakes, I understand that may not be as potential an issue. But overall, I'd like to get Mr. Spence, Mr. Amos, your take on how BSO is doing and whether there is room for improvement there. Mr. Amos, you haven't spoken in a while. Why don't we start with you?
Sure. I think BSO is doing a good job. I will say this much, when I go to the city, there is a BSO location there and I always see officers present, which I think is commendable. I also see the urgency when someone reaches out to BSO, they show up. I've seen where they come in and they monitor the city. And even at the mayor's budget meeting, sometimes the BSO is a part of what's going on in the city. So I think they do a really good job in the city now. I do think if the residents have complaints and it's brought to the city, someone should be there to listen at all times to let them know at least they have a voice. And once that is given to the city, that should be acted upon, whether it's communicating that to the liaison of the BSO and then it's acted upon. But I do see the presence. I do think they do a good job in the city of Lauderdale Lakes. There's always more that can be done. Just like I said with code enforcement, it's on a scale of 1 to 10, I give it a 7 because the presence is there, they do a fairly good job, but there's always a need to do more.
And Mr. Spence, what do you think?
Yeah, I think BSO is doing a good job with what they have. We don't have enough police officers patrolling our city, so that's one of the issues that I believe that we're having. But the captain came to our commission last month and he put forth his vision for BSO and trying to make community connections so that the community could see them and build a better relationship and together we could police our city better. But we really do need more officers, but understanding our budget is not there to have them. And I would not go for a local police department run by the city of Lauderdale Lakes. If it's going to happen the same way with the code enforcement, when code enforcement was under BSO, there was a big difference than when it was run with the city. So I would not do, at this point in time, with the city.
When did that split happen? When did code enforcement go into the city?
Right after our financial crisis. I think it's around 2010.
2010, and you noticed a difference in code enforcement?
No. There's definitely a big difference in code enforcement. It was almost like there was lack of code enforcement. The city recognized, because as residents, we voiced our opinion. The city officials went together, they redid the code enforcement handbook. They had a large town hall meeting. They engaged us, tell us this is what they're going to do and this is how code enforcement is going to start patrolling. They started off good, but then speaking to some of the code enforcement people that were there at the time, a lot of the city officials were roadblocks in them implementing the, enforcing the code.
Okay. Steve, did you have further questions?
Yes.
If you've got a good connection, that is.
Dan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Let me move back to Vice Mayor Marilyn Davis for a moment, if I can. Have you been walking door to...
I didn't understand you. You were breaking up and everything.
My question is, have you been walking door to door in this campaign?
Yes, I have started walking. Yes, I have.
What are you hearing?
You can hear anything from code enforcement, noise, parking issues. It kind of runs the game, you know? And all of it, on the other side of, I have also heard from residents that they feel I've done a good job and continue doing the work that I've been doing. So you hear a little bit of everything.
Okay. I've got a specific question about voting. A number of the precincts and voting locations were moved around by the Supervisor of Elections Office. Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Have residents adjusted to those changes? Or are people expressing confusion and discomfort over that?
Well, actually, I think it's fluid because we just got another polling location that was not there in, say, I think it was in June, July, it was not there. But then by August, it was there. So I don't think the Supervisor of Elections Office did enough to let us know that that particular location was going to come on board. So I think it does offer some confusion for people when you're adding polling locations at the last minute and not letting the city know in enough time that you're adding these things, you're taking things away. So I feel that that's a fault of the Supervisors of Elections Office not getting the information to us in a much-needed time.
And tell us specifically, tell us that new voting location. What is it? Where is it?
It's Piney Grove Baptist Church.
Right, okay, yep. Commissioner Davis, has Mayor Haydel Rogers endorsed a candidate in this race?
I have not heard anything about the mayor endorsing anyone at this point in time.
Okay. Have there been any candidates nights? Have there been any opportunities for the three of you to be in front of a homeowners association, condo association, civic group? To compare your views?
Yes, there has been a candidate's night in the Eastgate Homeowners Association and also there has been a candidate's night at the Broward Democratic Black Caucus.
Okay. Has the Broward Democratic Black Caucus issued an endorsement in this race?
They just did the candidates last night at a meeting. And as of last night, I was endorsed by the Democratic Black Caucus.
I see, okay. Let me switch to Mr. Spence for a couple of minutes, if I can. Mr. Spence, have you been walking door to door in your campaign?
Yes, sir.
What are you hearing?
Hearing a lot of... A lot of feedback is that the commissioners that we come out, get their vote, and they don't see us anymore. So we're not hearing their concerns. Unlike Vice Mayor said before, the expectation is that they want the residents to come and find them when a lot of times it's not convenient. As a president of a homeowner association, I know when we call meetings, people have, kids have homework dinner, so it's never convenient for them to attend these meetings. And so when I walk through my community, I get to hear their voice, their concerns. And I think that's what our commissioners need to do more of is go back into the community, drive around like previous commissioners, like even Mayor Brown used to do that, drive through the community and talk to the residents. A lot of the issues have to do with code enforcement. A lot of issues have to do with the UAZ project. There's no direct contact in the city for them to get help with the UAZ project. And this is such a big project that's taken over the whole entire city. You know, we should have learned from the first ones about the common mistakes that are made and have somebody that's there to have accountability that the contractors are doing what they are contracted to do. I understand that there's dust and everything else, but there's a lot of issues that the residents have no clue on where to go or who to talk to.
Okay. Tell us a little bit more about the UAZ project and about what the ultimate goal is and why are there concerns about it?
So the UAZ project is the county upgrading our water and sewer lines. So in the first UAZ that we had on this side where I live at, my parents live in the community as well, and they dug up the whole road and they weren't capping the sprinklers. They weren't running the water truck through for the dust. A lot of things they weren't doing that the community, a lot of grumblings that happened in the community. And it forced the commissioners to have a town hall meeting about the concerns. And at the town hall meeting, that's when we found out that the contractors are contracted to do capping our sprinklers, running the water trucks, and they gave us the 1-800 number to call if there's any issues.
The people contracted to do this with the city were not doing what they were contracted to do, is that right?
No.
With the county, contracted with the county, but they weren't doing what they're supposed to do.
But they weren't doing what they're supposed to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And even they start working, like 5:30, there's a dump truck dumping dirt across my community with a loud bang. When the city ordinance says you're not supposed to start working until seven o'clock. So even just stuff like that, they could park their, their tanks or the bulldozers anywhere for long periods of time, they have staging area that the city provided for them to, to park their, the vehicles and the pipes. And they were not required to use it. And this created a lot of issues for, for residents. And even the communication for the road closures, they did not properly communicate with the school board. That we could get our kids to school on time, it created a lot of issues.
Vice Mayor Davis, I'm hearing a lot of criticism from Mr. Spence about the way this project was executed, is this criticism justified?
I can say yes, it is justified, in the sense of even when my area was being done. There were issues, okay? Now, what is, what they were doing in, well, now let me back up. When the project got ready to be started, I received a letter in the mail that said that this was going to start, it was going to take this amount of time. And they gave phone numbers for you to contact. During different periods of time, there might be a letter that might be stuck on your door to say they were going to be doing this or that. After they finished with my section of the project, I know that the contractor was changed. Because of the fact of so many issues that we were having with the contractor that was doing my section. And when they said two years, it actually lasted longer than two years.
Tell us.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Now, tell Dan Sweeney and I, tell us who specifically, tell us the individual name of the individual employee in city government who has direct.
I think, I think you said what employee in the city has direct contact with the UAZ or for the UAZ project? Okay, it comes through our public works department. And.
Yeah, so asking you.
And he's the public works manager.
Okay. And he, and he reports to who in city government?
He reports to the city manager.
Right, yep. Okay. Let me ask Pastor Amos, who has been in the conversation for a few minutes, whether he shares these concerns about the way this project has been implemented and what should be done about it?
Um, I do, I do share the concerns, but I also think there needs to be more accountability on the part of the public works department. And it needs, there needs to be more ownership on it and better execution.
How, how would that, how could that, how should that be accomplished?
Well, first, I think the city manager should, should know what's going on. And not only know what's going on, but make changes. And when I say make changes, hold the public's work department accountable and set deadlines and timeframes. And find out what's impeding it, and if, if what the roadblocks are, how do we eliminate those roadblocks?
In November, would you be in favor of changing and hiring a new city manager?
Well, I, I would first have to know in depth what the city manager is doing. Is there more accountability that's happening in the city? I, I would not be able to make that decision until I do further, I wouldn't say research, but until I know more. And once I get into the city and know more what's going on and see what's going on in the city, looking at budgeting, looking at staffing, looking at over, how the overall city is being ran.
Okay, now, Mr. Amos, are you, I asked your opponents this question, I'm asking you, are you also walking door to? Are you?
I am walking, yes, I am.
Door to door and engaging within?
Yes, I am.
Have you walked in Hawaiian Gardens? Have you walked in Hawaiian?
No, I have not been in a, I have not been in a Hawaiian Garden.
Tell me where you have walked.
Oriole Estates.
Commissioner Davis, have the police and fire fighters unions endorsed a candidate in this race?
Not to my knowledge, I haven't heard of them. Usually they do an interview, but as of yet, I have not heard when or if they will be on them.
Okay.
This election cycle.
And Ms. Davis, tell us the last, that you recall, tell us the last major business, like a retail business that moved into Lauderdale Lakes.
Well, we've had quite a few businesses that have moved into Lauderdale Lakes. There's on, in one of the plazas, there's a puppy store that has moved in up there. There is a bakery that's trying to get started. And in fact, I have gone up to that particular location at the request of the property owner. Because she thought there were some issues with the city and, you know, issuing, issuing this particular business a license. So, I mean, I'd have to go and look to see what new businesses. We do get updated on the businesses that come into the city. You know, there's a beauty supply that's in one of the, the locations. So there are quite a few that come into the city.
Can you tell me, do you know the largest or one of the largest, who, what business entity is the biggest property taxpayer in your community?
Probably the biggest property taxpayers would be your commercial. Such as the Lake Mall, you know, Lauderdale Marketplace, you know, your larger commercial properties.
Right. Mr., uh, Mr. Spence, can you tell us something specific you would propose doing to attract more businesses to Lauderdale Lakes?
I believe we need major infrastructure change in our city. The retail space that we have left is not, is not attractive for any type of business, whether it's large or small businesses. So we have to find a way to work with the property owner to revitalize some of our commercial properties like we did the Lake Mall to attract larger business.
Okay, yep. Pastor Amos, what's your opinion about this issue?
Um, I think Lauderdale doesn't have a lot of land as other cities. So I think we first have to maximize on what we have, we have to tackle the business that we have now. Creating better marketing strategies to support the businesses. In, in lakes and, and other plazas, I see a lot of empty, empty buildings. So how do we get people to occupy those buildings and create more businesses within the city? And start attracting more buyers in the city, right, to support those businesses so we can build the city better? I think we need to start focusing on what's there, the business that's there, how do we support them? How do we maximize on their business? How do we help them market their business? How do we create more stability for their business within the city of Lauderdale Lakes? If we help what's there and they grow, and then the word will spread and others will come in to help build that city. So I think we first need to maximize on the business we have within the city now.
Yeah, let me, let me turn the conversation back to Vice Mayor Marilyn Davis. Inflation is high, prices are rising, but by many indicators, and if you listen to President Joe Biden, the economy is doing well, the economy is doing well in this state and in this country. So why, as Pastor Amos points out, why do we see empty storefronts in Lauderdale Lakes?
The economy might be doing better, okay, but as always in black communities, the economy is not doing as well as it does in white communities. You also have to look at what are the property owners charging for their rents? Because everything has gone up, as you say, and so have the rents on property. You know, when you go into a commercial property, it is not cheap to go into those commercial properties. Because not only are you paying your rent, you're also having to pay to remodel that particular space. And as a business owner and having had a retail location, it's like you're paying your rent, but you also have to go in there and upgrade that particular bay that you're getting ready to rent. So along with having to upgrade that facility to whatever it is that your business need is, you're having to spend that money, you're also having to spend the money for your rent, your insurance, your licensing, everything. So it is very expensive to open up a business, whether it's here in Lauderdale Lakes or anywhere. And can we control what property owners charge their, you know, people? We can't control that, you know?
Understand. Uh, Ms. Davis, what happened, what, what will happen October 1st, what's happening to the property mileage rate, the tax rate in Lauderdale Lakes?
Our, our property tax rate will go down somewhat. In fact, it'll go down approximately, I think the percentage was like 3.71%.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioner Davis, can you think of a, 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 an example of a stigma situation in the last couple of years where the city has, has needed specific help from Broward County, from the Broward County Commission, and how did that go?
From the Broward County Commission, I don't know if we want to say directly from the Broward County Commission, but we do go to the county for different programs that we put through in our city. And we have to go through them to get the funding for those particular programs. So we have not had any issues with getting the, the money that we have wanted to use for some of the projects that we wanted to do for our residents in the city.
Okay. Well, as I, as I alluded to earlier, you know, your, if I'm correct, your current mayor is about to become a member of the Broward County Commission, shouldn't that result in an improved level of communication between the city and the county?
I would hope that it would.
Right. Uh, do you think that, is it time for Lauderdale Lakes to give the mayor and the city commissioners a salary increase?
Yes, and the, and the reasons are, our salaries are dictated as far as increases are concerned, are dictated because through our charter, it says it must go to the residents. The city commissioners have not had a raise since before 2007. And when it went before the residents in 2007, it was rejected. And we are one of the lowest paid commissioners in Broward County. So yes, I do feel we should have an increase.
Okay, Mr. Spence, do you agree?
I agree, as a matter of fact, I think that's one of the things the commission now has been talking about. But I believe they've been doing it the wrong way, they've been trying to find a way to bypass the residents to give themselves a raise, and I don't think that's right.
Ms. Davis, is he right?
No, he's not right. There is no reason that we would bypass the residents, okay? Because it has to be approved by the residents. Yes, we have had communication among, sorry, I like, my lights just flashed. We have had in our commission meetings, we have had meetings about pay raises and how we could go about it. And in fact, one of the biggest conversations came around the fact that in 2007, when the commissioners went out to the community to try and convince them to give the commission a raise, you have to go out and have to talk to your residents, you have to let them know that this is what you want to do and why you want to do it. And as a result, it was defeated. So when we talked about it, it was like there, and we started talking about it, it was not enough time to put it on the ballot and also be able to talk to the residents individually to get their buy-in on helping the commission to get a pay increase.
Interesting, okay, I've got a couple more quick questions about this. Ms. Davis, which homeowners association or condo association or church or any, you know, any civic organization, which one, which one comes to mind which has the loudest voice at city hall? And is, is most engaged in what's going on in the city?
Eastgate Homeowners Association.
Okay, Eastgate, and what, what I think I heard you say a minute ago is that under your, under the city charter, any pay increase for commissioners and the mayor must be approved by referendum, right?
Correct.
It has to go to a vote, okay. Okay, all right, that, that, that's unusual, most cities don't, don't have that provision.
Absolutely, and, and that's why it's difficult, and it's not that you are trying to put anything over on residents of trying to increase your pay, even in the charter, it says that you can ask for a raise every four years. But because of the issues of residents not approving it in 2007, it's something that has not been revisited because of how it was done at the time. And should it go back? Yes, you know, but you do have to do some work with the residents to talk to them, to explain to them why it is that the commission needs an increase.
Right. Ms. Davis, in terms of the interaction between the city and the residents of Lauderdale Lakes, how much of an issue is language? And that is people in Lauderdale Lakes for whom English is not their first language?
I'll say specifically, I haven't heard of an issue, okay? If an issue is brought to us or to me that a specific group is having a hard time with the language barrier, then that's something that the city would need to look into and say, how can we correct that barrier? Whether it is getting someone that knows that particular language to make sure that there's someone there that say at the commission workshops, at the commission meetings, so that there's someone there that would be able to speak directly to those particular individuals.
Okay, and, and last for you, Commissioner Davis, this issue came up earlier in this conversation, the fact that Pastor Floyd Amos has received PPP loans. Is that an issue that, that, is that an issue that is important for voters to consider when they vote in this race?
I don't necessarily think it should be a issue, because there are many companies that got PPP loans. And so I don't see why it should be an issue. As long as everything is legitimate and above board, then there should not be an issue with anyone getting a PPP loan. We don't hear you, Steve.
Yes, I know, I, I lost the connection, I don't know why. I'm here, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Commissioner Davis, answer again, I apologize, I didn't hear you.
Not a problem, no, I said there should be no issue with anyone getting a PPP loan. It is, it was a federal program, and as long as you follow the rules and filled out the correct paperwork and you would then approve legitimately, I don't feel that there should be an issue. Because many people, many large companies got PPP loans.
Right, understand, okay. Mr. Spence, do you agree with Ms. Davis?
Yes, my business received a PPP loan as well, there at State Care Center. As long as, like I said, if it's, if you Um, as long as, like I said, if it's, if you legally done it properly and done it right and he is providing the services. And he was impacted by the pandemic, then the assistance was offered to, um. Businesses that qualified and. And if he's one of them, then. Then is there.
Okay. I've pretty much exhausted my list of questions here. I, and we're getting close to the top of the hour, so. Just want to switch back to Dan in case Dan had the final question.
I think I, I think I've.
Is back. I, I lost you guys for a second, so I don't know if it was you or everybody.
I think, I, I think that was you. Uh, Steve said he was, he was, uh, had just wrapped up his questions and, uh, I, I have nothing.
Mark, are you there?
I'm here. Sorry, I don't know.
I think she froze now. I think she froze now, but, uh. But we were just about to say that we didn't have any more questions, so.
Okay.
It's a perfect time for Stephen to freeze. Um, listen, I want to, uh, Steve, unless you have anything else to add, I, I think we're, I think we're done.
I think we're in good shape. I appreciate, appreciate everyone's participation this morning very much.
All right, thanks a lot, everybody.